We'll be picking up where we left off.
What is both be planning and zoning tonight?
Oh, that drop.
But has some of these...
No, 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 no. It's ordinance is because we're gonna set the plan and zoning. Thanks tonight on my dinner.
I already did.
No, we most certainly do not.
No, because we're waiting to see when the lawyer can...
That's what's in my notes.
When's the plan zoning?
I'm, I'm saying, I don't...
No, when y'all had the last meeting a week ago, y'all set this one for the same, for continuance on tonight before this meeting.
But the last...
And then y'all scheduled the planning and zoning, y'all asked for that to be on the agenda tonight so that when he's here, y'all can set the P and Z so that he can tell you when he's available.
That's what I thought too.
And in our last regular meeting, my notes say is we set it for three times.
For the what?
I didn't bring mine. Do you have your note?
Well, in the minutes, it says, "Set workshop date, P and Z workshop, 3/20/22 or 23 at 6:00 PM." After this event last time, we agreed we were gonna have an ordinance workshop. So, I got an agenda for an ordinance workshop.
That's, yeah, I understand that. I mean, it's only a good, and I just wonder what happened.
I don't know. I didn't realize it.
Because y'all scheduled this one at the end of that ordinance meeting. I can pull up the recording if y'all wanna listen to it.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying it didn't happen. I'm just, no, we had done the other one previously.
I guess the lawyer didn't get back with his tone unless he could come, and I forgot all about it.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. I just wonder what, what happened.
Then is this one...
Yeah, because y'all, y'all literally said, "P and Z workshop, 3/20/23 at 6:00." Okay, now we'll do that. Uh, I'm sorry.
Is this one one year or is it...
Shit, me and you have the same book, but I can sit next to you. No, I think you probably want that book that Lucia has. I don't think we do. Because me and Lucia have, are sharing that book. Because I think this one's updated. And I'll try and make this one work.
Okay, on the dog regulations, the 2.9. Y'all remember, a lot of that was repeated at the very first... Yeah.
Right. At least I wanted to look at, look at it again.
And kinda, and kinda mark some of these out because their word was, you know, repeated.
Right, right. It would include in 2.2.
Yes, 2.2, and then, um, there should be a, um, a number of 2.90 dog regulation in here.
Yeah, yeah. So, are we looking at...
And it starts out with 2.913. It starts out with a limitations, the, that 2.913. What's this limitations?
That's the same thing.
No, this one's by Jan because this is by Leon.
Oh, true.
Okay, but the 2.201 or 2.2 period, the animal permit, are we getting rid of those? And going to the 2.9?
The notes...
Is that what we're...
Update 2.202 to read, and then update this. So, y'all, I think y'all, my understanding is y'all wanted to get rid of, or update this one to read just like this, get rid of this.
Okay, did y'all hear what we wrote down?
We're just gonna move them up under section 2.2?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Move what up?
2 dot, 2 dot 9?
All of it?
02 and 01.
Well, two, uh, article 2.200 is animal permits.
Right.
So, the permit part of 2.90 would be moved into 2.202. And then you're still gonna have a 2.90, you're just gonna start it at dangerous dogs, if, if there's not any... Yeah, see, there's dangerous animals here on 2, on, um, 2.40. If y'all wanna look at them both. On the, uh, the 2.903 says something about, uh, sick, sick dogs?
I'm missing that documentation, this same version, so...
Oh, okay. This is no vicious, dangerous, ferocious dog or, or dog sick with, or liable...
2 dot 90, 2 dot 1.
2 dot 903.
Oh, okay, sorry, I see it, I see it, I see it in here. It's just down below.
Right there, dangerous dogs.
And it's under dangerous animals on 2.4. All that needs to be moved at the, the other one as well. And take out the repetition in that, for my incidents.
Yeah.
So, okay, y'all? Do you get my, 2.3?
Yeah, but I'm seeing others too, so that's one, uh...
Right, there's several of them that are...
Okay, so the dangerous dogs are going to move...
Combine and omit any, um, anything that repetition's in that one sentence?
2.40?
Yes.
2.4 includes more than just the dogs.
Yeah, it says animals.
Yeah, so 2.903 is dogs. So, should we omit that one and leave 2.4? Really, this 2.5 is... More like 2.905. So, maybe we want to just deal away with 2.2 period, huh? And use 2.9? Is there a step in 2.2 that's not in 2.9?
Well, 2.2 is supposed to be your animal permits, it says.
Right.
With your dog and your dangerous.
But then the 2.901 is, you know, license required and license fees.
Which we're gonna combine in 2.202. It's got permit regulations on there?
Yeah. That's why, I mean, I'm wondering if we should keep... I know we're gonna combine if we leave both, but is there a need to leave both? Yeah, I mean, the wording is, in one of them, it's a permit, and the other one is a license. 2, 2.201 does include a little bit more because it's small-caged birds, aquatic and amphibian animals.
Okay, since we've agreed to move to combine 2.902 with 2.202, we can start section 2.900 with, instead of being at, where it says 2.903, and that would be 01. Just the wording is, is dang, it's, it's got specified as, it's got broke out as a dangerous dog, running loose. To start, you know, it's got it all broke out for...
Okay, so take 2.901 and 2.902 and move them to 2, 2.01 and 2.02? Combine them?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what we decided last time. And then start section 2.900, where it's 2.903 now, it'll be 2.901.
All right.
Does that sound okay, y'all agree?
Yeah, so we're just gonna do away with...
So, does your 2.90 start with 2 dot 903, or do you have a 901 already?
We were gonna combine 2.901...
Okay.
And 2.902 with 2.202. That's what we had decided last, that's where we stopped last time.
Okay.
Because this 2.90 was so long, that's why we stopped out there. And then start section 2.900, where it starts 2.903 with it being 901 to 903. Where it specifies each, each thing out instead of...
All right, so, we're gonna combine them in 2, 2.2, remove them from 2.901 and 902?
Yes.
Yeah.
But that's all right with, y'all?
Okay, so, 2.20, 2.201 is now animal permits.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't list specific animals except that excludes small birds, fish, and amphibians. So, does that include cattle? Goats?
No.
No, not in section four.
Yeah, yeah. That's in 2.6.
Okay, just wanna make sure that we're not excluding something here that could cause a question.
I mean, you could put it in there, you could make each owner of, but that's a lot of certain, yeah, that's a lot of registration to do for certain...
With dogs, we don't really run around them, you know?
Right, yeah.
So, do y'all want to bring over, all the 2.9s or 2.1s?
Oh, I saw a staking, I don't wanna just look like that somewhere else too, but...
Yeah, I do too.
I'm not finding it.
There is, it's, it's in the addendum, uh, particle 2 dot 90, dog regulations, it's...
Yeah, no, I thought I saw it somewhere else. Well, it says it's in 2.914.
One in 2.90, that was signed by Leon. The statute of law was... It should be 2.914, did you say?
Yeah.
That might be one to strike, because I think that's covered by Texas law.
Yeah. Do we wanna strike it, or we just kinda wanna read the state, you know, reiterate it?
That's fine, as long as it...
We don't, we don't wanna...
It doesn't step on state law.
Right, and that's what attorney review will do. They'll make sure it does not overstep the boundaries of what the state law says.
So, will you make note of that? Or the attorney?
Yeah, maybe just if it says, "Okay to remove it in conflict."
What did he say?
Okay to remove it in conflict in state law.
Yeah, he just mixed up a thing. 2.914. Did you wanna talk about 2 dot 913?
Isn't it somewhere else?
It's in that same section, the staking of animals.
It was updated the August of 13. But it says... It says the same thing, the limitation says the same.
Not true, Molly. Well, I don't know what happened to all that stuff, that one.
Hold on, this is how we know this city approved. We don't have, we, we have a bond, but...
Right, it's not usable. Okay, that's where... Didn't say that, um, with the exception of the city approved and the holding facility at the city barn.
Then we don't have a holding facility. I mean, this one, do you have both of them in there that you're looking at?
No, so mine ends with, "In residence of the city," although...
Okay, well, this goes on to say, "Of the exception of the city-approved and maintained holding facility at the city barn."
So, I'm guessing someone questioned why the city was holding something? Which is, I don't know why anybody would question that, because that's... I think this last part of this amendment needs to be struck.
Well, does it just create an exception for the city to hold more animals?
Yeah, but we don't even, A, we don't have a holding facility, but B, even if you do, you don't have to have an exception. That is your pound, essentially.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, well, 2.911 says licensed dog impound.
All these have been scratched.
Yeah, mine is...
That's what I'm saying, all these books are not the same.
Mine's got me crossing.
So, we need to take out 2.9, 2.911?
9, 10, 11, 12, down to...
2.1001.
2.1001.
But that's the same, that they just scratched.
Mm-hmm.
So, y'all agree we're gonna take out 2.911?
I mean, that...
I mean...
We didn't have any...
Right, we don't yet, but, I mean, y'all wanna leave on?
Let's see, we don't wanna...
I mean, y'all left some other stuff that we don't have.
Yeah, this, I mean, 2.912 looks like a good idea to me, dog bites and, uh, responsibility to be owning.
I don't think she's writing 911, the license, the licensed dog impounded, it shall be the duty of the pound keeper to call notice to be served by mail upon the registered owner of any licensed dog impounded under the provisions of this article.
Yeah, that's kind of irresponsible.
So, if, if we get, if we ever hold that, yeah.
Okay, so, um, the 2.13 that you were talking about?
Uh, 2.913.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, limitations.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, well, do you wanna leave that to cover yourself?
My book shows, um, I think one they x'd that out just because it's on the following page.
It's, yeah, it's like they copied it weird or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they didn't, they didn't do away with them, they just said, "Okay, it's on the next page."
Okay, yeah, actually, on this one, it looks like that's, they inserted...
I took it from 2.9 to put it in 2.10.
Yeah, well, they showed what was gonna be inserted, and then it's inserted later in the body of the document. Please do it.
This one really needs to go in this...
Mm-hmm. You have that down here?
Mm-hmm.
2.911, the licensed dog impounded, really should go under...
Impoundment.
2.10, article 210, the impoundment.
Which one?
2.911.
Needs to be moved to 2.10, because 2.10 is, you're talking about is not impoundment.
2.911. Go in to... Oh, crap, hold on.
Yeah, 19 and 911 should probably be both moved in.
All of these do, don't they? Fee for impounding and keeping, dogs impounded, how redeemed. Public notice, because it says immediately after impounding any dog here under, it shall be the duty of the pound keeper to enter this record of the pound, blah, blah, blah. And that's the same thing, so...
2.9, dog regulations.
Dog regulations. Because honestly, we didn't even have a law or a cat. See, I don't actually want, a dog restraint is under impoundment. A dog should have a restraint violation, and that's literally it, that's all it says.
Why should it be in...
Dog restraint should be under 2.9, should it not?
Mm-hmm. I mean, I think so, because it's...
Under the regulations.
Because it's not in, not for impoundment.
I know, it makes no sense, the way this is...
Yeah, I think the dog restraint goes with all the other dogs, though.
Okay, so move, move to 2 dot...
Dog regulations.
2.9.
Okay, why don't we, we put the 2.10 and see if y'all are okay with all that, and then let, um...
And then I say, well, I'm not saying 907, 908, 909, 10, and 11 all need to be moved to 2.10.
Well, I need to be listed under what goes best with the title?
Right.
The section.
Yeah, that's already more, are more impoundment related than...
2.7, 2.907, basically.
If we agree with the wording, then don't want anything changed, then let, um...
2.917.
The city secretary then take out the... All these are the same, like, there's three different ones we found that are the same, under the same title. And then we can go back and repair after she gets through.
See, are put all under one?
Well, not under one, uh, under the ones that it should be in, like the, like the one that's got the bees should be under dog words. Yeah. And like there's two sections of noisy animals? One says a noisy dog, one says noisy animals, those pertaining to noisy dogs, I mean, in here.
Yeah. But it's, so how do we open these to rabies? Like, shouldn't that be...
With the dog?
Here, or at least make it, or make it...
Well, actually, the dogs are not the only thing that can have rabies, but...
Correct.
Well, no, it doesn't need to be under that, but it should be closer to, like, it shouldn't jump around like this, like, it should be... Because in order to get their permit, don't they have to prove that they have rabies shots? So, should it not be under 2.2? Our part at 2 dot?
I always think it would need to be under...
About that, too. Whole thing is, one of them is animal permits, and it all deals with all the animals. And then 2.9 is dog reg, you know, regulations. So, do... Should it be animal regulations, you know what I'm saying? And incorporate all of them together? Because, I mean, you're gonna have to have your permits and everything for cats and all that, too, correct?
Yes. But cats get rabies shots, too, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, that should be listed, though, like, the rabies inoculations should be listed under the per, with the permits, as that's part of why, how you're able to get your permit.
Maybe the 2.9 shouldn't say dog regulations. Because 2.913, it's a limitation on the number of dogs or cats. And it's under dog regulations.
Right, and you can just as easily impound a cat as you could a dog, so, yeah. Right, and you can just as easily impound a cat as you could a dog, so, yeah, so change two dot nine to animal regulations?
Yeah, and then, and then do the combining.
I got, I'm not, no, just this one.
That's all of those impound, yeah.
Okay, do y'all move on to two point, or y'all okay with that happening? With her working out, the, getting us a clean copy of two point, and then we can.
He might look and see, it sounds like that what we're talking about are domestic animals.
Yeah.
Like pets, and there might be somebody else's code out there that we could take a look at and just see the direction they took.
Okay. On to two point one two, the penalty.
What page, what's the page under?
Um, it's two dot.
Page ten. Which cases shall be punished or punished, say two thousand dollars, provided that.
What were you reading?
The, where it says penalty of.
Section one dot one six.
Yeah.
In that, in the body, Article, it says Article two dot one two, penalty, and then it says penalty found in section one dot.
So what amounts is, uh, penalty of five hundred?
Depends on the violation, it says, fine not to exceed, oh, hold on. The violation of any such provision of this code or any such ordinance shall be punishable by a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars, but that's if it's declared unlawful or offensive or a misdemeanor. If it's anything other than that, it's two, up to two thousand dollars.
Whether we want to have it, or. Actually, it's listed in the first part, we could take that out, because it's listed in, um, the very first chapter, under general penalty or code violations.
Yeah.
And we could take that little section out altogether, since it's already in the chapter one.
Yeah, that's a code violation.
This is not just animal, it's. So what do y'all want to do?
I mean, it can be done now.
It can?
Yeah, I'm scrolling, see, maybe, see, maybe, stuff at the front.
So is that about, y'all, leave it in chapter one and take it out here?
As long, I, I could pay a report to it. Especially if it's attributed, you know, is it anywhere else in that section, you know?
It's in chapter one, because that's the only place that it talks about a penalty, is that chapter, uh, two point one two.
Yeah, just, it's basically just saying, hey, any penalties for, in this section, refer to this other section there, so. I don't have a problem with that, unless you wanna make the penalties different.
You may not, you'd have to see what, what state law dictates.
Okay.
For the, the, excuse me, the penalty fines, the fees associated with it. Because if you look at one dot one oh six, there's an asterisk at the top of it, it says state law reference authority of municipality to satisfy's, BTCA local government code, section four dot oh oh one.
Okay.
So you have to basically refer to local government code.
To refer to section in this document, and then refer asterisk section another time?
Yeah, what is the current, what does law currently say? What is local, local government code currently saying?
Like, I just, I think that's the right way to handle it, that it was to refer to it in a single place in the document, and then refer to how come there if we need to. It's just the most dynamic way to handle it.
Okay, the next one is, uh, two point one three bees?
Let's talk about.
Let's talk about bees, you said.
Um, two point one three zero one keeping?
Yeah, as a hobby beekeeper, and I know I'm not the only one here in town, but I just, I think this is out of date. Uh, there are a lot of municipalities, even urban municipalities now, that allow hobby beekeepers and honeybee hives. Because of the ecological nature of it, so it's not, I don't, I mean, I have a problem with people wanting to restrict the numbers or prohibit a commercial beekeeping, I think that's actually a good idea, just because of the law. Unless we get a home and fortress here, then they might need an exception for that, but this is just, this is just horribly outdated.
Um, I think the only thing that probably needs to be, since there are people that are allergic to them, say, by the same way with the chickens, you know.
Within a certain distance?
Yeah.
Kind of same.
I mean, you know.
Well, the nature of what they do, you know, they.
I mean, they're gonna be there.
Further, but.
Right, exactly. They're gonna fly where they wanna fly.
Owls in the middle of the road kill more people in Ladonia since I've been here than bees.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. They have Broadway, too.
It's only on that, right?
County.
County, right.
And, but anyway, so do we, with that, do we want to, the hive itself, do we want to say? Uh, because they're gonna, like you say, they're gonna fly where they wanna fly.
Yeah, yeah, if, if we want to put some restrictions on the distance to, within a house a hundred feet, or, I think whatever is commensurate with the goats.
Yeah, that you got.
Something like that, that's kind of.
That's fine. Within.
I think it's a hundred.
It is, one hundred feet.
Well, the thing is, though, goats, cows, or whatever, you can tank. With bees, don't. They can go wherever they want.
Right.
So I would.
Yeah.
Right, whether or not we have an ordinance about it or not.
But the ordinance is not, they can't come around you, the ordinance is, you can't keep.
Or how far carver them, which means if they're on your carver, you're obligated to get rid of them.
I know, the Russian has this, this guy. I'm good with, with, I mean.
You could, you could change this one, you could change two, two thirteen oh two, from nuisance to restrictions of like how many hives you can have on X amount of land. If you're, if you're changing the keeping of to within one hundred residence, like this, then you're gonna have to get rid of nuisance.
I wouldn't worry that. I wouldn't worry that, because then you're, then you're gonna go back and say, well, you're restricting every other kind of animal, whatever.
Well, and if somebody uses them for an agricultural exemption, that's an agricultural measure, remember the density of the hives, the people on these properties, too.
So I would not wish, I would not. The other I don't have a problem with, but.
Which part?
The, saying somebody this is from.
Okay, what about this, the nuisance, because if you're, if you're, if you're now changing this to read this, you need to get rid of the nuisance, any bee hive.
I think you get rid of thirteen oh two and create the bound, or the distance boundary in thirteen oh one.
Yeah.
Okay, rabies.
So within any, within a hundred feet of a.
Any other residence.
Okay.
Hives are reported up here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We give it the same, so it won't hurt there. Okay, uh, rabies. And that's, that's up in the court, aren't we, are they talking about the rabies shots?
You might wanna look at this one, too, because I know a lot of breeders, um, give the first round of inoculations and provide the shots.
Founded by the city clerk, a prematurely issued, which includes rabies and regulations technically part of their.
So that needs to come in line to two point, two, chapter, the section two, it needs to be moved up to section two.
And with the others, pet, the rabies, I can't.
Yeah.
So you can't get rabies shots, too?
Yes, they do. I don't have access to that.
Move to two, two dot two?
Yeah.
Yes. And then.
It'll probably become two dot two or three, and I'll just.
Let's see, so, this two point one five needs to be moved up within impounded animals.
Which is.
Two dot one zero zero zero, two dot, or two dot ten, basically.
Wouldn't it may end?
Because the only way you're gonna adopt anything from the city is if it's an impounded animal. And they're gonna keep them longer, three days, if they stay, after three days of being used enough?
So, you're gonna move it to which one?
Two dot one zero zero.
Of course, it talks about impounded, impounded. You see that?
Yeah.
And then, two dot one five oh two. Would fall into that impoundment, too.
Yeah. I hope they have it separated out, because these are unlicensed animals, as opposed to licensed.
It would still be good if it was on the same section, yeah.
So move.
Yeah, adoption of dogs, we have the adoption of cats. Of course, you have shelter hours, but we don't have it.
The two one five, they should be the same. Yeah.
And that.
Pretty much this entire.
All four is cats, is the dogs. When the next.
So, so two point one five, one five oh oh should be all moved, right?
Mm-hmm, yes. Two dot one nine. Yep, yeah. Can you leave the shelter hours? That one will move it, but instead of actually having hours, we will, I'll put, it'll say shelter hours for adoptions, but it'll say, okay, yes. Like, all this, actually, this whole body knows that will go away.
Okay.
It'll just say, um, reserved for future codes, I think that's how we're gonna do it, so that whenever we actually if and then, then we can just plug it in there.
You have a new adjournment, this is one of the two minutes.
Yeah.
And we're gonna adjourn the ordinance workshop at six fifty. Order at seven P M. Russell?
Here.
Eddie?
Here.
Uh, myself, Deja, uh, Kim?
Here.
And, uh, Gray?
Here.
Can we have somebody that would volunteer to do the, um, invitation?
Sure, I'll do it.
I'm glad I came.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for all we've been given, and for this beautiful day, and for the moisture which we received, and for the beautiful weather that we are enjoying. We pray, Heavenly Father, that Thou would bless us in our meetings tonight, that we'll be calm and patient with one another, that we will, um, have Thy Spirit be with us, and that we will be able to accomplish the goals and tasks we have before us. Please bless the members of the City Council for their service in our community. We pray, Heavenly Father, that Thou would bless the citizens of Ladonia, that they would be protected and taken care of, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Blessed be the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, a pledge to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Have, uh, seen some comments they've had?
Hey, good evening, I just wanted to give y'all an update on the, on Treehouse, it's been a, been a busy month in the, in the news. Uh, we've been in the National Publication Insider in New York, um, Austin, Houston, and on the international front, believe it or not. We've been in London Mirror, Czechoslovakian paper, and actually, a, a book just came out out of Spain, and Treehouse is on the cover of a container architecture around the world. So Ladonia is on the, on the map, and, and this brought about some, you know, a lot of interest, we got an offer of one point two million for the Treehouse. We passed on it, you know, because we're here for the long term, and wanna do more, and be here for, for all the things to come. So we're gonna present this to, to the council, you know, for y'alls, um, you know, this way. So we want to present this to, to the council, you know, for y'alls, you know, this way.
Say, Jan's roles?
I'd just like to take a moment to thank the previous Mayor Cooper, the previous...
Talk louder.
I can't talk louder. Microphone.
Make sure that's turned on.
It is.
Yeah, it's, okay. Get it a little closer to you if you can.
Can you hear me, Debbie?
A little better, yeah.
And the previous council, and I knew, uh, Mayor Perry, for the, you know, with these grants that we had, for the whole projects we built, houses for people. I just want you to know that my brother-in-law, Bobby, is in his house, the first house that was built. And I was just going to say, thank you to the council, everyone in the house.
You're welcome. Okay, onto the consent agenda, minutes of February twenty twenty-three.
I can imagine that approved the regular meeting with the city council minutes from Tuesday, February twenty-first.
Do you want to put these in?
No, it just says meetings. It doesn't specify, yeah.
And he's specified as twenty-first, so...
In my schedule, except the March ones and, you know, the March ones.
See, see, maybe I'll be a bit incorrect. Shows that set the workshop date, P and D, for three twenty.
All right.
Maybe we got to do something different, I mean, because that's not what, what happened.
Because then y'all turn around and set the ordinance workshop for the same time. Y'all scheduled two meetings at the same time. That's such a true two.
Under seven. Let me check. Oh, we got to move it out here. Oh, sorry.
Where, where is the schedule at?
So, you're having, you're going to schedule this meeting for this time, and then turn around and schedule the ordinance meeting for the exact same date and time.
But where is that showing on here?
It was not conducted during that meeting.
Okay.
That was conducted during the first ordinance meeting on March the sixth. Is when y'all set that one.
But it was after this.
It was after this, but y'all set the meetings at the same time, because y'all wanted him at the P and Z meeting.
I, I understand that. But what I'm saying is this is incorrect.
Well, we...
But that's how y'all voted.
Yeah, we've approved meetings that didn't occur before, and we didn't go back to the minutes.
I did.
You can't change the minutes. That's the way y'all approved it. Those have to stay.
So actually, the minutes are correct, we'll just have to make another motion.
Which y'all have, y'all have another, y'all have it on the agenda tonight to set it P and Z, since he is here, so that y'all can work with his schedule.
Russell, you said for twenty-first, try.
Yeah.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to accept the meetings for February, the minutes for February the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Anybody want to second those minutes? I'll second. Do you want me to second it up? Is all in favor?
Aye.
And you didn't list things.
So...
Yeah. It just says meetings, it, there's no designate...
Right. The twenty-first, so...
Yes. So we're... Y'all just, y'all can approve all of the February meetings. You don't need the March ones. Just the February, sorry. I got a little oversell, so I'm just trying to... Minutes, obviously.
So we have the minutes for, um, Monday, February twenty-seventh, for the public hearing for Stevens Street, and February twenty-seventh, the workshop for permit fees.
Make a motion that we adopt the, or accept the public hearing closure of Stevens Street dated Monday, February twenty-seventh.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to, uh, accept the minutes for the public hearing for February twenty-seventh, the closure of Stevens Street.
Aye.
Ready to second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is, uh, permit and fees workshop. That was held on February the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion, we accept the city council workshop permit fees on Monday, February twenty-seventh.
I have no questions about that.
Okay, we need to second that first, really get this done. You got a little second, those need to be discussed, discuss it.
First taken. Okay, Greg, what is your concern?
Well, we got a lot of information here that, first time I've seen it, was when we got this package. Like all this site plan information and, um, these fee schedules here, several different things. That we didn't have during that permit and fees. And another one, um, y'all see that you received from Dana, a letter from TML, Mr. Ted Clues, which most of the time, I agree with what he has to say. He does a pretty good job, but I have to disagree on this one. And I have given y'all three different examples, at least, of where it says, HB eight seventy-one says that you cannot charge a contractor a registration fee. You can charge a permit fee, but you cannot charge a registration fee. And that is in that packet. It also says that if we need to, to contact our attorney, again, look through the information.
Okay, HB seventy, eight seventy-one specifically states, even ventilation, air commission, and...
Okay. Right here. I don't know if you got this, you should have it sitting there too. All right. Farmers and electricians prohibited municipal registration fees for their licenses in previous legislative sessions. Well, I mean, that takes care of that. Because it's already been approved. But in...
No.
In our document here, it says that all the contractors will be charged a registration fee. And that includes HBAC, well, this says you can't. It also says you can't do farmers and electricians.
I don't know. Don't know what you want. I mean, I was told to check with TML, that's what we did. They gave me their response.
I understand. I'm giving you information here. It changes that response. If you'll contact Honey Grove, Commerce, Cumbie, Cooper, you'll find that they, none of those charge registration fee, because Texas law says you can't.
Chair. Do the agenda items approve the minutes or not approve the minutes? I don't know if y'all are trying to get into some sort of discussion about whether or not contract fees can be approved or not. If that's the case, then it's not on the agenda. But the other, the other issue is, if the minutes reflect what took place in the meeting, that's what this agenda item is for. And there are other things that need to be decided outside of that. It needs to come before the council on this specific agenda item.
So that we can revisit it?
So you can, or you can make, I don't know.
Which is part of the inside agenda.
I, I don't, I don't know if you made any decisions in the workshop or not. You shouldn't have. You shouldn't, you shouldn't have just kicked it around and talked about it. But now, if you're getting down to the point where you're saying, oh, we're going to, what's going to be our permit fee structure? What's going to be our, are we going to charge registration fees? That needs to come in here specifically, so these competing sides can be debated with an appropriate agenda.
So that means that they don't, do you want to approve the minutes?
So if we approve the minutes, we're still, we're still saying we can, we're going to put it, we're still saying that we can put it on the agenda to revisit it?
Yes, sir. Because there wasn't a decision in the workshop, it was just a discussion.
We're not approving the fees or anything, we're approving the minutes.
That's right.
But the minutes reflect some things that I don't agree with.
The minutes do not, the minutes simply state, discussion in regards to changing fee schedule to line up with Bureau Veritas's current fee schedule was discussed.
We will, what we'll need to do is put an action item in order to, um, accept those fees changed. We discussed changing them, but we haven't put them on the act, the...
We haven't taken action on...
Right, we're just approving the minutes that we did discuss what was discussed. The permit fees.
What I'm saying is, is in the minutes of the charges.
But we haven't told her to change them. We haven't, we haven't set on, you see what I'm saying? Just like the ordinance is, we discussed these.
Right.
And we're going to approve the workshop part of it.
Before we vote on, I understand that part, yeah.
Okay, so with that being said, Russell's made a motion to, uh, accept the minutes for the permit fees workshop, and can we second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, financial report for February twenty thirty. Do you have any questions or...
Still getting miscellaneous items in there. Information also, and other... Thought we were trying to get rid of that.
Okay. If you look at the profit and loss details, it specifically tells you bank charges. I gave you a copy of that, so that y'all know. That was a return to check fee, basically. We don't get them often.
Well, I understand that, but here's one, uh, transfer to GR, it just says, other uses transfers out.
That's for the loan payments.
Okay, tell us it's a loan payment.
Specifically, where do you see that?
Page six.
Of water sewer?
General fund.
What line, what line item is it?
Ninety-nine, eight thousand.
Under eighty-nine eleven, transfer out. Y'all approve that with your budget every year. It is part of your budget packet, it is on there as listed, and it has always been to... You have to move some money to help, whenever we pay the loans, if we come up a little short. It's, it's, it's budgeted, and there's nine thousand dollars, I do believe.
But it would be nice to know where it's coming. Can we get, can we get an index as to what these numbers are? All of them?
As to what numbers?
Every one of them, all, all your code numbers.
There, I suppose what's on the...
Yes, sir.
Front page?
Yes, sir.
On the front page, those numbers right there should match the numbers on the detail in the...
What page?
The very first, first start. Do you go down?
So, nine nine seven nine three one, sit down, press six, and that'll do.
As property taxes.
This is an example, that nine nine seven nine three one, transfer in carbon tax. It's the same description as it, that's on page seven of the details, water sewer. So that's, that's, that would be your index on a monthly basis, because that's the summary of all the details for that account.
Do you buy it, Greg?
Not for that one, I didn't.
Okay, Russell, for it?
Look on page seven of the P and L for the water sewer department.
Doing the index of profit and loss.
Yeah, so the, the index is the P and L report, the summary P and L report.
It's for series twenty-eight. It literally says in your memo, it's for the series twenty-eight, that's, that's a loan.
Okay, the attachment to one and a half, you know.
That's it coming in. It gets coded under miscellaneous transfer in. It gets coded under miscellaneous transfer in because it's crossing, because it's crossing funds. So you have your general fund, whereas where property tax goes. You move some of that property tax money over here to pay for a water grant or a water loan. So because the way QuickBooks is and because of the way you're crossing funds, it's not going to be as clean cut as what you're looking. That's why I gave y'all the breakdowns, the actual profit and loss detail, so that you can then go to page seven and see here is what came in and what it, what it came in, the reason why it came into this account. So why it had to move out of one account and into another.
But this is ninety-nine, eight thousand. Okay, show me where that number is. I see ninety-nine, seventy-nine, thirty-one.
That's it coming into the water fund. As to where you have ninety-eight, excuse me, ninety-nine, eight, eighty-nine, eleven is a transfer out. Again, you're crossing funds, so they're not going to be the same code. One's in, one's out. I don't-
But we're saying on page one, it gives me a list of those and it doesn't. Correct?
Which P and L are you looking at?
Uh, Water and Sewer.
Okay. Which account do you have a question on?
I've got a question on the general fund, but again, you know, I'll have to go back to the-
Let's take a late payments, because that's a good example. So late payments is zero-zero-five-five-two-one, right? Seven-hundred-twenty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. So on page three of the Water Sewer Department P and L report, you see zero-zero-five-five-two-one, late payment penalties. That's every transaction that equals the total you see on page one. Seven-two-three-seven-nine, seven-two-three-seven-nine. So that's the detail. Well, that summary, you see up under February twenty-third of page one of one of the Water Sewer profit and loss.
Okay, I'm looking at the general fund now, page one. And I have no number, ninety-nine, eight thousand. I have a ninety-nine, seven thousand, which is one of the last things on that. I understand it says transfer out on ninety-nine, eighty-nine, eleven. And I'm assuming that went to the sewer plant? Or the sewer department?
Correct. To pay the series twenty-eighteen loan.
So where does that number enter into the Water and Sewer?
Other income, ninety-nine, seven-nine-three-one, transfer in from property tax. Eighty-seven, twenty-nine.
I can see the amount. The numbers don't correspond. I, I want to know, I want to know how, how we decipher these numbers. How, how do we see where this transfer out came into the Water and Sewer Department as an in? And it, I mean, the numbers don't correspond.
They're not going to because it's QuickBooks. I, I don't, I, I can't understand QuickBooks.
Okay, where can you get in that QuickBooks stuff, so?
Are there different, are there different line items for income as opposed to expenses? So let's say five thousand dollars comes in.
Correct.
It's got a different number up here on the income. But when it goes out, it's got a different number going out.
Right, and then you can be in, exactly. And then you can be in your water fund and you can have a code and it can be an, an income code. You can be in your general fund. That exact same code could be an expense code. That's how it was set up years ago.
Okay, so I think the question is, how can somebody on the council then track that? That, take my five thousand dollar example. How can they track that as income over here? By, by the numbers or we'd have to have a description of that particular transaction?
I could be anything permissioned, just truncated. I mean, I see on the Water Sewer Department where the money moves in. Um, the transfer in. Which balances from the out-of-way transaction. So that, those, all those fields are too short to show. Like where it's split is, there could be more information up there, right?
Okay, so I got another question. I'm assuming this list is receipts and deposits or whatever money we had coming in and out. Forgive me, but I just assumed that we would actually see some receipts. And that's what we discussed, that we would have receipts that we could see and-
Those are up there?
Before, before we accepted them.
Okay, hold on. These are things y'all have already done for February. These are the accounts payable that y'all approved for February.
Okay, so.
Y'all approved of that.
Okay, so, but we are going to see those?
These are for March.
These are March, right here.
Okay. I, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying here. This is to, to be approved for February. I understand that part. That's for March. Okay, so we're going to approve those tonight? Okay.
That, March is good. These are accounts payable. Y'all are combining two things.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking a question there, but, yeah.
Okay, so the financial report for February twenty-twenty-three. Which include accounts payable. Last one. That's what we're discussing now.
Right.
Okay, so do I have motion?
Make a motion to accept the financial report for February twenty-twenty-three.
I'm going to second that motion. All in favor?
I'm a no. I'm a no.
You're a no. All right, accounts payable, March twenty-twenty-three. Do y'all want to see the accounts payable receipts that she has?
I think I just have a couple of questions. So there any expenditures that require a purchase order that were made without a purchase order?
Or not add up to date, even the best.
And if y'all recall, we had discussed the mayor looking at all the receipts before she additional them to be signed. So even if we approved them, she should be looking at all of them to make sure that they go inside with.
Which she does.
Okay, my second question is, any unauthorized expenditures?
No, sir. As of today, no.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable for March twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to accept the accounts payable for three, March twenty-twenty-three. Give me a second of that motion, all in favor? Okay, we are now going to move, look down to new business for Newt Cunningham to present the economic development.
I don't, not sure where I should speak from, but-
Oh, you can drop that, sir.
Okay.
There's a microphone there.
I didn't want to turn my back to everybody.
Will you, you turn around and face them if you want.
Yeah, you turn around. Okay, well, let me, let me do this.
You got a short cordage.
Okay, and I'll swing my head back and forth. I appreciate being here, appreciate the chance to talk to you about development. And we've got change going on. And I think the question is, how do we model that change? I think if we just let it happen, we're making a mistake. And I try to stay away from four-letter words, but this is one I dwell on. Plan. We need to plan. And one of the things Judge Moore did was talk to Dale McQueen and a few other people about coming up with something like Bedco that takes care of the rest of the county. Uh, you know, people over in Honey Grove, they like Bonham, but they like to do it their way. People down in Leonard and Trenton, you know, they like Bonham, but they like to do it their way. Grayson County was offering to lead economic development for Cook County and Grayson County and Fannin County. And I think Fannin County likes to do it our way. So I think it's important that we come together and ask ourselves, what do we want our future to look like? You know, I, I grew up down on the coast and we had Beaumont and we had Stinkit, I mean Pasadena. We had some places that you wouldn't want to be unless you had to work there. What do we want this place to look like? And if we decide what we want this place to look like, if we want it to look like a new Nashville, we want it to look like a new Hollywood, we want it to look like, you know, Birmingham looks now. Uh, we need to go out and recruit in businesses and have available to those businesses, highlight to those businesses what we have to offer that may draw them here. Uh, when I grew up as a kid, I, I remember going to Birmingham and you could smell paper everywhere and you could smell steel being, you know, created everywhere. The town stunk. The wind, the wrong direction, it was terrible. Uh, probably thirty years ago, they decided they were going to turn themselves into something else and they developed themselves into a health center. Where, you know, hospitals, medical centers, they changed their, their, their existence. Uh, we've got a wonderful community here. We got people who care about each other. Use some German terms, there's Gemeinschaft and Gemälfschaft. Gemeinschaft basically means a community. Gemälfschaft means a society. You know, the Metroplex has a society. And I don't think we want this place to look like the Metroplex. And what we need to ask ourselves, what do we want this place to look like? We're not going to be able to remain, you know, rural. We're, we're not going to be able to enjoy what we're enjoying now. Twenty years from now, the world's going to be changed. This place is going to be changed. And, you know, do we want to be, you know, a, a DeSoto? Or a, you know, I think of Cleburne. Cleburne used to be a beautiful place. Now it's filled with small factories. You know, what do we want our community to look like? Uh, with all that said, I'm full of it and I like to talk. Now Dale actually works and I'm going to let him talk to you a bit about what he's up to. He's actually carrying the load and he's looking for other people to put the harness on with him.
Thank you. Thank y'all. I'm Dale McQueen and I live in Ivanhoe, if y'all know where that's at. What we're looking to do, if we start a community or an economic development commission for the county, is to bring everybody, first decide, like Judge Cunningham said, what do we want to do? What do we want to be in ten or fifteen years? Or does a different section of the county want to be something else? To get those things worked out first. The second is, is to put together a website to where all the information about the county is in one place. So if you want to find a piece of property here, you want to know what it's going to take to move into it, what the water situation is for that area, you know, what the zoning is, things like that. To have all of that on one website. Uh, one of the things that would affect LeDonia at some point, you're probably going to have some businesses come in and ask for an abatement at some point on their taxes. You know, what does that look like? So you would have to have an abatement policy. We can have that on the website for them to look at first. That way, it make it a one-stop place for if you want to do business in Fannin County or move to Fannin County, you can find that information there. Now, as far as a city, you make your own rules, you do whatever you want to. That's how it works. We would just be a place for somebody to look and say, okay, this is what they do. This is what it would take to do business there. Or if they want to be around the county someplace. That's what we would be doing, is creating a website to do that. But the first thing is, is if you create the Economic Development Commission, it basically involves seven members. They're appointed by the judge. They would be appointed from across the county. There would not be one specific area. And so everybody would have some say in how that works. But like I say, it's mostly to make a one-stop place to figure out what does it take to do business in Fannin County? And if Fannin County has some abatements or some different procedures, what are those? And you can look those up. And you can look those up, you know, to start with. So if you want to come in here and find a piece of commercial property, we can put together a website that has all the commercial properties in the county available. And you can choose what your parameters are to look for, look for a place. The city, if you have some property that, you know, that you want to develop, that would be on there also. So that's what we're trying to do, and it's still a few months off if we do this. But we're trying to see who might be interested and who would be willing to put some time and effort into doing something like this. Any questions?
Let me just add a couple of things. Now, one of the things you ask yourself, if Bedco's doing it, why should we do it? Are we going to interfere with Bedco? I think the point is, the more oars you have in the water, the better off we are. You know, if, you know, if Honey Grove wants to have its own development corporation, good. If Leonard does, good. The more we have going on, the more we're going to draw people to us. We need to decide what type of industry we want to draw. We also need to know what grants are available out there. There's money that can be had. I'm going to look to Dale to try to figure that out. How can we get money to help us accomplish what we want to accomplish? Challenge, you know, who do we want to bring in? Challenge, what do we have to offer? You don't know what we have to offer. You know, somebody says, what are you serving? I want to be able to tell them what we're serving. And if there's grant money out there, and it doesn't have strings attached to it, you know, grant money a lot times has strings on it, and sometimes it's worse than strings, it's a rat trap. I don't want the county to get caught in a rat trap. So I, I think change is inevitable. I remember being told 800 years ago, maybe it was just 500 years ago, by a college professor, the only thing that is constant in life is change. So if we can see change, let's tread it. Take it the bull by the horns and control our futures. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Dale?
Still have any questions?
Yeah, can I ask you a question? So once you have this commission put together, and you have seven people from around the county, what is the mechanism, or how do you feel like citizens of Ladonia, for example, can feed, you know, what we want to see happen and what we want to help, you know, and help steer? How can we feed that up to the commission?
Let me respond to that. First of all, we need to figure out what you want. And if you want a particular type of industry, you can look at the various tools that are available to bring that industry to Ladonia. Ladonia may say, we will abate taxes for cinema companies. We will abate taxes for healthcare providers that want to build a hospital here. We need to, you need to decide what you want, and you may want something entirely different than, you know, Savoy wants. And the concept of the webpage, you tell them what you have on the menu, what you have available, and you tell them who you want to invite to come to Ladonia. And there are all sorts of devices out there. There are PIDs, and there are TERS, and there are abatements, and there are pilots, and there are all sorts of things that a entity can put together to attract people here, industry here that we want. And we've got a huge thing going on, you know, over in Grayson County. We, you know, somebody woke up and decided it was wrong to have 85% of our ships that we use in vehicles and airplanes and, you know, missiles being manufactured in either Taiwan or China. So they've decided to build, you know, chip plants over in Grayson County, and there are going to be all sorts of additional companies that are going to be taking care of that need, suppliers, and they're going to need to set up somewhere. You're also going to have people coming in from Grayson County who say, I don't want to live in Grayson County. I want to live on a lake. They're going to be coming here, and you, you need to let them know what is available. And if you look down at Leonard and, you know, Trenton, I think those are the Plano of the, of the next decade. You know, I can remember when, driving up to Austin College, probably about 520 years ago, driving up to Austin College, you got past Richardson. There was nothing to the west, all the way up to Sherman. Just cornfields and cotton fields and nothing. If you looked over to the, you know, to the, to the east, that's where the towns were. And now there's more development in between, I guess, Preston Road, 289 and 75, and over this way. But I think that's going to change. I'm amazed that what's going around, going on in Melissa, you would think that a huge landfill would cause people not to build there, but you've got $900,000 homes being built within a quarter of a mile of a giant landfill. I think some people will prefer to drive 40 minutes more and be up here in, in Fannin County. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Sort of, no.
Is the Economic Development Corporation, is it primarily focused on attracting commercial? Or is it commercial as well as residential?
They can do both. As far as the residential, you know, if you have like the zoning around the lakes, you can highlight where those are and what's going on in those. The commercial is, you can put each different property on there, and what it is, how big it is, you know, who has it, what realtor they call to, as far as reselling it. It's just basically a place, they can go, a one-stop place for them to find the information they want to have. Instead of going to 10 different places, have it all in one place.
So is this going to cost us, this website? Does it go cost the town of Ladonia or?
No, ma'am.
The county?
No.
Nothing?
Well, it's going to, the county's already put some money up to get it started. Now, is it going to cost, you know?
Each town?
If there's grant money, well, you know, each town, when you say each town, somebody says, you know, you need to look after the county. For me, that includes, it's like, it's like being at a table with 12 kids. They're fighting with each other, but you're the parent, and you need to take care of all of them. So I'm, I'm looking at what's best for everybody, and I'm delighted that Bedco is bringing business into Bonham. You know, and Bedco is financed in part by the city of Bonham. And if you're getting business in, and you want to participate in financing what's going on, you may want to develop within this larger site, your own development commission. And again, the more development commissions we have out there competing for business, the more business we're going to bring into the county. So it's like, you know, having 12 kids and saying, okay, I want all of you to work and send your checks home. That's, that's where I'm at. I want, I want everybody, you know, with a paddle in the water and the, and the county moving forward, and the county becoming what we want it to become. And what Trenton and Leonard want may be different than what Ladonia wants. But I think that's what we need to be looking at. That's what we need to be accomplishing. You know, I look at my donkeys out in the pasture. As long as there's grass, they eat. They don't think about tomorrow. We need to be thinking about tomorrow. We don't need to be just reacting to what we find in front of us.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
All this sounds good and everything, but I know in everything, there's a fine line when you get to reading. I'd like to know where that fine line is.
Well, I think she brought it up. We don't need to be wasting money. This, this isn't an employment opportunity for a staff of 50 people. You know, we're talking about doing it with volunteers. Now, if you're a volunteer and you get worked to death, that's not happy. But it's, at least you're doing something positive for the county. So I think there, and you don't want to, you know, you don't want to do things where you end up having to give something up. Let's say, you know, there's grant money available if we put in, you know, wind farms. Obviously, we want to say, no, we don't want any wind farms. We need to pick what we want, and we need to attract people that have what we want. I think Dale was talking about, one of your sister cities decided they wanted to develop, and they went down to a job or industry development fair. And they got down there, and people said, well, what do you have to offer? And they scratched their head because they didn't know what they had to offer. So we need to know what we have to offer, and I see this being done with volunteers. I don't see big expenditure. I see it going on. If Ladonia wants to say, okay, if you'll build a hotel here, we won't tax you for 10 years. That's the cost, but you've got to weigh that. What are you getting by not taxing a hotel for 10 years? You're certainly going to get a lot more than the county did when it gave abatements a few years ago to a bunch of solar farms. No employees brought to the county, land ruined, and the property values of those people living around it. But the judge before this judge, and before Randy, pushed it and did it. And the big question is, why would anybody do that? And that's what we need to be mindful of. We've got to make sure we know what's going on and make sure the right thing's being done. Make sure we plan, and what's happening is what we want. And we're never going to agree on everything, but we can try to come to consensus.
Well, we, are we sending out any more information about this, or is this?
That is what we've made up for right now. Like I say, we're a few months from actually doing it, and so we're just trying to gauge their interest out there to be a part of it. Because, like I say, this is a volunteer organization at this point.
Telephone number?
That would be the county judge.
Okay.
In fact, it's going to be Lisa.
Lisa. Be a secretary.
Well, I think secretaries know who does the work. Well, thank you all. Enjoying it. I've got to go home and take care of the pot.
Well, before you go. Before you go, Jed, there is interest here in this community to steer our future.
Very good.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for your service. You know, I'm a, when I was doing pro bono stuff, I was doing it for free. Now that I'm a paid employee, I can't claim that anymore. But I, I'm assuming the city council here isn't drawing a paycheck, so I thank you all for your service. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, back to the information reports. Public Safety and Work Department, Grayson County.
Oh, not really. Lot of rain.
Do you have, Russell, do you have a volunteer fire department report?
I do. February 2023, chief's report, total calls five, medical calls four, structure fires one. Total volunteer hours 49.99, fire usage 1,000 gallons. In the month of December, we had one night of training and one business meeting. Training slowed down to a few members in the N P school. Still needing members and volunteers. Signed, Kyle Stark, chief, Ladonia Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay, and the administration department? The Chamber of Commerce banquet is March the 25th at 6:30 PM.
Where?
In the school.
It doesn't say, so.
And that is this year, 23. Fanny Fan will be 4/4, 23, at 9 AM on the square.
It was changed to the 11. I'm sorry.
Changed to 11.
I apologize.
I made that 4/11, 23. And then the city hall will be closed Good Friday, 4/7, 23. Spring cleanup will be 4/22 through 5/6 of 23. Early voting at city hall will be April 24th through the 28th, and then again, May 1st through the 2nd during normal office hours. This year, there will be no late voting hours. City council elections will be May the 6th, from 7 AM to 7 PM here at the city hall. And then the 20 mile garage sale will be May the 6th, 2023. Okay, old business, phone system upgrade versus the current. Then also, you got, I missed something else, Ross.
This is the smart office.
The new one?
Yeah, that's, that's part of the original.
And Dana, I don't know if you had any questions about that second proposal or not?
My only question is, does this include an analog line for SCADA? Because that does have to, that's the only thing.
I know, I know we discussed that, but.
Yeah, I don't see it, so.
We did discuss, and he actually, I think he pointed out that in the original bill, it looked like that's not included in the total monthly calls, right?
Yes, it is. Well, it's billed separately.
Right, so is that 377, 377 plus?
Plus an additional 80.
80 per line?
SCADA only has one line.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry. Row one and two.
So is this, this SCADA controller not used as separate phone lines?
Yes, but they're analog lines. For some reason, the SCADA has to stay on the analog line. I don't know.
That's why I was asking about the quantity. Is that one, and then to the wells, is it a little one, so is that through?
No. One at each feeds into that.
But then you have to have another line. Yeah, because if they're phone lines, they're calling each other.
They're calling the SCADA. They're not. The SCADA controls the in and the out to both wells.
Okay. That's probably a question you need to verify and make sure that his quote has the right number on there. Because I think from my understanding, the conversation we had, we had talked about well one, well two, the SCADA controller, something at the surpan?
I always do other things, surpan. No, surpan does not have to be, surpan's not on SCADA.
So there's not?
So it does not have to be an analog line. It would be, it would be a regular. If this becomes fiber, that one would upgrade to fiber. The only thing that has to remain on an analog is the SCADA. And the SCADA talks to wells one and two.
Okay. I don't think I had that, I don't think I had that information. Because I think I had told them that I thought it was five total devices. Something this might be inflated if it does include it. But then that 37706 includes 80 at two or 80 at three?
Should just be 80 at two.
Because if that's included in that total, it looks like they're on the comparable.
It's not, it's billed separately. It says billed separately right above it.
I don't understand what that is.
That's, that's the total cost, from my understanding, from looking at this, this is their total cost for ATT opposite hand, plus the Y link is one, is the 37706.
So are the rest taxes or something like that?
The rest of what taxes?
37706, because 1.23 plus 1.74 is 377.
Or is it 160?
Okay, so that does include that SCADA?
Mm-hmm, so it'd be additional 80.
Okay, so I think, unfortunately, I think we have another iteration to go through then, because we need to know the exact number of analog lines that we have.
At this current time, every single one we have is analog?
Well, every one is required to remain analog. So coming to SCADA lines. Because if that device in there is talking.
To well one and two.
To well one and two, and they're talking via telephone, then that one probably has something like a motive inside of it. It talks via telephone line. So that would be three. Maybe like a well picking up and calling you and telling you there's a problem. You have a telephone line for it to call.
Calls in and then returns the call.
Do the AT&amp;T people know what we have?
They should, because they're the ones who pulled our billing.
Okay. Because if they're only quoting this one data line, then they haven't, they haven't quoted it.
Yeah, and it may be, I mean, that may be, it says analog lines, plural, but then underneath it, it says $80 each, so.
Okay. So you may have to have another call with the account manager behind the move to table. Next meeting. And we got to figure out exactly how many analog lines.
Yeah, and then does this, and then does your, the proposal you got, does it include any analog?
I believe so, but I don't, I don't see the details.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to table the phone system, phone system upgrades until next meeting to get more information. Do you want me to save that? I'll save it. Do you want me to save that motion on paper?
Right.
Okay, annual water tank inspections.
This is just for y'all to approve to schedule it.
When do they do?
June.
So was there?
But we have to get on their schedule.
Was there anything in the packet?
No.
Okay.
We use Texas tanks, that's who we've always used.
Okay.
Reason?
Yeah, aren't there any options?
I don't know, that's just who we've always used. I don't know if there's any other options or not.
I think we need to look.
Is it due by third?
June.
It's due by June? Do we know what the requirement's on? Do we get to put it out for a bid?
If it's under $50,000, you don't have to bid.
Okay. How much is it?
I don't know, y'all put it on your budget.
I'm only asking because it's not on the agenda and there's not any associated details.
$598. And yes, it was budgeted.
You want to get it done or?
I think we need to check on pricing.
Okay, make a motion, we send it out to bid.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to second, I mean, to send the annual water tank inspections out for bid.
Seven.
Greg has taken in the motion on paper. Okay, set dates for mosquito spraying. We just need to give Dana the okay to call and see what dates.
Noble Resources is the only use for that. I believe so, I think, or Lennar. Got a Lennar. We need the Noble Resources. $220 per application.
We're going to?
Three. Two, three. Three.
And they're supposed to do the whole city, right?
Yes.
So we're just approving you to go get dates, is that?
Yeah, we'll call them and see when they're available to start. They typically start in. Let's move, something like that. Actually, it's like last year, they did their first one in June. June, July, August. Which is a little late, but if y'all want, I mean, I don't know.
Is that what they recommend?
Yeah. Pretty much that early.
Well, what they actually recommend is phoning me on about once every two weeks, but we do it once a month for three months, so.
One thing we need to contact them and make sure they understand where the city is.
Okay, make a motion that we set the dates for mosquito spraying. Ask Dana to make that.
Okay, Russell's made a motion to have the secretary call and give the dates for mosquito spraying. Do you want me to take that motion on paper?
Please note that we need to make sure they know where the city's properties are.
Okay, D is COVID funds earmarking.
Present that's what this information is we were provided to Max about.
I didn't provide that information to you.
So.
This is how it was presented to me to put it on the agenda.
So there was a question about the COVID funds in the last break of May. And we really didn't get any great answers. So I put in a request. And I requested any and all transactions made with all COVID funds received from date of receipt of first funds to date include but not limited to account numbers and locations of any deposits, transfers, debits, or credits to these funds. Please include who or where it was paid to or credited from or transferred to or from amounts and dates of transactions. This is what I received. Y'all didn't get the whole packet, but all you're missing is 29 pages of payroll. So when I received this, y'all got a copy of the, the top page, and it shows that we received them on the 8/23 of 21. And I guess that's the account number. And it's a split, not really sure what's going on there. Says we received a balance of 76, or an amount of 77,689. And then the balance was the same. And then we received another tranche, 9/26/22, of 77,83441, which left a balance of 155,51531. Still don't see that in any of our paperwork. So I asked this to be explained to me. And the information I got, correct me if I'm wrong, the information I got was that in 2022, we had a, or I guess it'd be 2021, 2022, we had a budget shortfall. And two or three things happened during this process. Hired another city guy, gave the city guy a raise, things like that. But all in all, it looks like we paid payroll. That's the best I can get out of it, correct? And from what I understood, in one of the meetings prior to me being a council member, there was an insurance payment made, and then it got put back. Not sure about the whole process of that. And then supposedly, it was earmarked for the fence around the sewer plant.
They've never voted on it earmarking. And I, my understanding is this, is this agenda item to earmark the funds?
This is an agenda item to discuss the COVID money.
Y'all, y'all specifically put on here is COVID funds earmarked.
Because they were supposedly earmarked for the fence. That's the reason it was worded that way. You know, I can't tell you, you know, I didn't, I didn't write the words, so. But that was what the whole thing was, is because it was supposedly earmarked for the sewer plant fence.
Unless it's voted on, y'all can't earmark anything.
Not, not telling you it was. I'm telling you that's what I understood.
Okay.
Okay. Nevertheless, is there any money left? I mean, this shows to me a balance of 155,51531.
No, that shows you how much we received in.
Okay.
That's in them.
But.
At this current time? Let me find your, your total.
But this also says January 1st, 21 to March 13th of 23. Well, that is on the line that has 155,000 on it. That leads me to believe that on March 13th, we had 155,000. That's not correct?
Hold on.
Now, those are, those are the transactions that occurred. Page one are the debits to that account from January 1st, 2021 through March 13th, 2023. So those are the total deposits made to that account.
Okay. So that's the deposit balance?
Right.
That's not the ending balance?
Right. That, the pages, pages two through 30, which are missing from here, probably have additional details.
Now, I gave you 33, I gave you the welcome to all of this, you know.
I don't, I don't know.
But 31 should be the, the transfer, what is this, transfers out and all that. So I mean, that.
Okay, let me explain to y'all how this, how this is supposed to work.
Please.
In an ideal world, when you don't hire two public works employees and then turn around and give them, one of them a $4 an hour raise two months later. Every month, we're supposed to set $9,000 aside to pay back these loans. When a secondary employee was hired, that $9,000 every month was not being able to be set aside because we had to make payroll. Because you have payroll, you have insurance, you have retirement.
Anyone in the budget?
No, man.
So was it approved to pay this money to, or payroll?
I'm going to table this item because I feel like we had kind of moved off what my understanding of the topic was.
I agree.
Mr. Wilson, I'm going to ask you a question.
All right.
What is it since this keeps coming up? Do we need to actually do? Because it's become mostly, we're not getting answers at some point along. So what exactly do we need to do to finish this off?
Somebody needs to articulate the issue that connects with whatever it is you're seeking is where, where are the COVID funds and where have they gone? And how much COVID money did we get? Where did we spend it? Who authorized the expenditures? It needs to be couched in those kind of terms.
And whenever the paperwork was given to Mr. Morris, he was specifically told that when the council members hired a secondary employee without consulting the budget, they created a budget deficit. Under the U.S. Treasury, which is who submitted it, who paid these, and after working with Charles Edwards, who is with Grant Resource Management, now Grant Works, yes, it is, it was totally usable for any budgetary shortfalls. Didn't matter what that budgetary shortfall was. If you did not receive, if you received less than $1 million, we received 155,000.
So one of the questions that maybe the, the company should ask itself almost every time they're in expense is like, where the money coming from? We all hired me, I wasn't on the budget. So that should have been a question like, how in the heck are we going to pay this dude? Because we don't have a line item that says attorney.
I think the first 5,000 was on the budget.
Hey, we haven't used that up yet, let's get physics. Sorry, but that, that's a deal because at the end of every year, every city does this. This is on to you. Every city says, oops, we had expenses that we didn't budget for, or we went over budget in this place, where do we get the money from? But because the budget is adopted by ordinance, then you have to amend that budget by an ordinance amendment. It's kind of sloppy, it's cumbersome, but that's the rule. And so usually, at the end of the year, or maybe sometimes every quarter, that happens. So that, that a city does that. But if we're, if the concern is, and I think the answer tonight, and that'll be out about listeners too, there, there was a thought maybe that it was earmarked, but it wasn't.
Correct, yeah, there was never a vote by the prior council to vote to do anything.
So I think the greatest question is, well, what happened to the money? Where's the money? Where did it go? And, and, and was that authorized or did it need to be authorized? That's the question. And that's how, in my mind, that's how the agenda item should be framed.
Correct.
We want to follow up on the agenda, on the, we want kind of a, an audit, if you will, of all the COVID money. When did we get it? Where did we spend it? Can I audit the work? That's my thought.
So you're going to email?
I will, yes, yes, I am.
Now, we need to go out and make payments. Do we need to table this until next meeting? Is that what you suggest?
Yeah, till we get information from the attorney.
Okay, Greg has made a motion to table the COVID funds earmarking until we get information from the attorneys, the attorneys?
Second.
Russell has taken that motion on paper. Okay, abandonment of statements issued. Okay, we have an ordinance. Okay, we have an ordinance, twenty-twenty-three, oh-three, twenty, an ordinance of the city of Weldonia, Fannie County, Texas, abandoning, vacating, and closing a section of North Stevens Street, right, exhibit A within the Weldonia Cemetery, as a right-of-way or dedicated street, and authorizing the city secretary to file a copy of this ordinance in the real property records of Fannie County, Texas, to evidence such, providing a severability clause, providing a repealer clause, and providing for ineffective date.
Those, those first three paragraphs are just, just the authority that the city has to manage its own public streets. And then that little one there, that has a couple of older things in it, indicates that after the city looked and looked and looked for a plaque or dedication to the street, couldn't find one, which is significantly illegal. Never was dedicating it to the street, we never accepted it as a street. So the rest of that is just, okay, now that we, now that we don't think we've ever dedicated it, we're going to give it up anyway, we don't want it anymore. And then that description is one that I worked with, some people on the cemetery community with, and it's on that, that map. And that's the best I can get up with a, without a survey. So if this is approved, then the city secretary will file out the real property records, and the, the matter of record that has been abandoned.
Does it have to go to the county taking off the Google Maps?
That's above my pay grade.
I believe it does.
I don't do Google, so I, I mean, I don't do Google Maps. But the city will be able to tell people that it's, it's not a system.
You don't have any questions about this on council? No motion?
Maybe approved ordinance, something like two zero, two-three, zero-three, two zero.
Stand.
Russell has made a motion to approve the ordinance of twenty-twenty-three, oh-three, twenty. Greg has seconded that motion, all in favor?
Well, due to the opposition that we heard, I make a motion, we do not grant the rezoning request.
Okay, Greg has made a motion not to, to deny, to deny the rezoning request from Park Street, I believe it residential. Do we second that motion, all in favor? So that land will stay, let it residential. Fossil Park ownership designation. I have no information on this.
Make the paper, I have a G fossil park ownership designation.
First and second to table the ownership designation of fossil park.
Can we get more information?
To get more information. Alden?
Aye.
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 Aye. Forensic audit.
Again, we don't know as much about it.
Yeah, I know a little bit about it, but not enough to really discuss it.
Leave the table.
Can I have a little discussion here?
Yes, sir.
This agenda is supposed to serve two purposes. One is to give these folks out here notice of what in the heck's going on. And the other is to let the city council kind of know what in the heck's going on. If you're going to pay me to be your lawyer, give me some stuff so I can write this stuff up. Because the time and amount and energy and effort you are using to come in here and table stuff and do it again, we have already been here since, well, that clock hasn't been changed. We've been here for an hour and a half, and we still got plenty of stuff to do. And you could save, you could just save attorney's fees by saying, Hamilton, would you write this up? Where we would know about it, and whoever you're questioning, step up and say, here's the data I got, here's what we need to talk about. That's just a suggestion to try to.
I have Bill, like, was the mayor and.
Absolutely.
I, because, because I don't know.
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to table Mr. Forensic Audit. Russell has made a motion and Debbie has seconded, all in favor? Okay, perfect base.
Well, we'll discuss that.
Well, we, no, we made a motion to accept the minutes. This is for the base itself. This is when you're going to.
This is the base schedule.
This is when you're not going to do what you, you know, you didn't agree with the base. Since Dana has come up with some more paperwork.
Okay.
This is that part.
All right. So I guess we're back to the same point, you know? We got paperwork, discrepancy in that, so.
So you can, like, not accept them and schedule another workshop, since we have additional information, or?
That's fine with me. I mean, I don't want, I don't, I won't vote to accept them as they are.
Does council have any comment on anything that was included in the document?
Well, I didn't, I didn't see anything, anything about that. Here's, here's, I'll tell you what, every time you send, when I send information to TML and say, hey, give me your legal opinion on it, they'll send me something back, and I always say, but it's your deal, you're the city attorney. And so if that channels to me, that's what you kind of boil it down to. There's a, there's a difference of opinions whether or not the city has the authority to assess a certain kind of fee against the contractor. Seems to me that would be a job you'd say, Hamilton, go find out and tell us, so we can get it over with, one way or the other. So, but it's not a fact question. That's, that's, that's not a fact question. It may depend on how you label people. But it's a, it's a matter of law. Either you can, you can assess on the fee or you can't.
And I don't like four or five sheets of paper.
Oh, no, I might not even give them back to you.
You don't have to, they're yours.
I don't know, yeah. Is this, is this right here?
Nope.
Something about budget. The one that says contractor registration fees.
You want to need minutes?
No, here.
That's one of them. But you, you should have had one for, I think you already passed it. That's the one from TML.
And another, another hint to you, there's not a lawyer in the world who's going to sit here and get competing information and give you a, if they are, he can fire them that night. And say, I know the answer to this, I memorized it six years ago, I didn't want to cut out my skill and still the same. Somebody's going to have to go look it up. It's just that, just, that's the nature of the beast where I work. Because if I had all the law memorized, I wouldn't be right here if we put something else. That's, that's my thought, is just tell them to go, go find it, send a memo to you guys, and then y'all vote on it first time, whatever. And I'll give it a Dana, and then Greg, maybe he has some information on this, and put it all together. Okay, well, and I'll, I'll give it out to you.
So the base will set up another perfect big workshop, just to make sure everybody's on the same page.
It could be very well that we have benefited, we had a good use of time, you know.
Oh, no. I mean, this was what was asked of me to do, that's what I did. And now, here we are.
So we need to set a date? Or we're going to wait, pending response?
Whatever he gets back, pending response, and we'll set a date.
If you haven't heard from me about two weeks, you need to call me and say, hey, hey, hey.
Greg, are you making that motion? Okay, Greg has made a motion to table the permit fees until council gets back with us, and then we'll set a date for a workshop. Make sure everyone's on the same page with the new information that we received.
Second.
Russell's seconded that, all in favor? Okay, now we need to set a date for Wednesday meeting.
No, we had a council agenda request.
Council agenda request one.
We were going to look at it and see if we need to change it. Problem, problem we have now is that, and I don't have one in front of me, so I don't know where I'm, I probably got one, but I don't know where it is. We've asked to, to have Dana send us all out a draft when she sends it to the attorney, or the agenda. So we can look at it and make sure that if we got any questions or whatever, we can get back with the mayor, or whoever we need to, and see if there's something on the agenda, or something's put on the agenda that is not quite like, you know, if we, one of us requested something, it's not quite like what we requested. And at this point, we have to do that by Wednesday at noon. And we haven't even had, at that point, had a response from the attorney or anybody else. So, what does it say on here?
It's four.
Okay.
End of day, end of work day.
Right. I'm requesting that we have at least till Thursday at noon. You know, or Thursday at four o'clock. I mean, that gives her all day Friday to type it up, or whatever she needs to do, and, and post it. But what we're getting into now is something doesn't get put on there, and we're asking her to get it put on there by Friday anyway. And this request form doesn't reflect that. It says we've got to be done by Wednesday.
Here, here's the, the process, because I understand it, it's not different from any other place I work. By Wednesday at noon or Wednesday at four o'clock, you ought to be, you ought to have the topics that you know you want to talk about in your brain.
Correct.
I don't add stuff to this or take it off, that's not my job. All I do, I'll ask her the same questions that, that we got asked tonight. COVID funds earmarking, what's that all about? Because if there needs to be additional data on that Wednesday and Thursday while I'm working on it, I can fix this. But if I don't get that data, I said, well, that's it, we're going to come in and talk about earmarking funds, that's a good thing. Well, that come to find out, that's not really, that didn't get the whole thing done. And there's, you know, some of these other things, like the fossil park ownership designation. I called her today and I said, there a contract? What's happening here? What's the deal? And she, she didn't know. So if I, if I had known, when you do your request, look, the Upper Trinity River wants us to assume the maintenance on that contract out there, or on that land. We don't own it. That's a different statement than what's on your, on your agenda. And I think that's just to push things along. It's not to, if, if you ask for something on, for Wednesday, it'll going to be on that agenda. It will be there. And if, if I don't know the facts behind it, it'll be there in the very same form that you asked for it. I might change the verb, but that's about it. It's to try to make this run a little bit more efficiently. Because right now, tonight, I've tabled three things or four already. So that's all that is, and I don't, I don't really care myself what the time deadline is. The staff and I just got to have time and a few facts to shake this stuff out. So it gets, you really get to the topic you want to talk about. That's it.
Well, I guess my question again is, we don't see it till Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay? So we don't know what's going to be on there. And we don't know, maybe we, we asked for something to be there and it's not. Well, Wednesday at four o'clock, it's too late, we can't get it put on there now.
Not if you made some sort of request ahead of that. If you say, hey, Dana, you, I, I asked for item A on there and I don't see it on your deal.
Okay, again, that request maybe didn't get interpreted correctly on the other end, just like earmarked, okay? What I want to discuss was COVID funds. All right? So I didn't.
The mayor is the one who gave all these agenda items, the forensic audit, just like that. The fossil park ownership designation, again, came from the mayor.
Okay. But again, if we have requested something through the mayor, and she has told you what she will leave ask, but it didn't get.
Okay.
Communicated correctly.
That's why that form right there is needed by you. You have every right to fill that form out, sign it, and send it directly to me. That way, it is ver, it is verbatim how you want it. Not, I told Patricia and then Patricia told me, and somewhere between you and Patricia, and getting to me, it has changed.
Okay.
Russell has sent me countless of these, and every time they've ended up on the agenda, as he stated.
Well, let me ask you this.
As proof that I've.
Yeah, is it, is it, is the, is the agenda form the thing, or is it the contact? But let's say somebody wanted to send an email, me for instance. If I said, hey, we need to put this on the agenda because it's something I just looked at my notes, and then we hadn't talked about it in two or three months. If I send an email, is that going to be enough?
Yeah.
Okay, so what, the, the form is just to formalizes it, but if you put it in writing and say, I need this, and if you copy me on it, when I get the agenda, I'm going to go, okay, okay, look here, something's not right here, somebody asked for A and A on here. So there's, there's a way to, to get this done, I, I think. And now, is that going to be an okay procedure? Either, you got to fill that out, or you got to email somebody and say, here's what I want on the agenda. And then if I don't understand your words, I'm going to call you.
I don't have a problem in, in, in the email. I try to do it by email all the time. And that way, it's, there's, there's paper trail.
Sure.
The agenda items, not necessarily, but yes, we can, we can handle that, that's my problem. Okay, I'd still like to see it go to Thursday. That's just, that's my opinion.
Thursday AM?
That's fine.
Does that give you enough time to prepare and redo everything?
Hey, this is what, this is what he's already asked for anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Well, Wednesday's a good day, but so long as, sometimes I have it Thursday by, by noon, and I know you're, you probably have a template there, you're just steady on banging into it. But if you, you get it to me Thursday by noon, if you hadn't heard from me by Thursday at five o'clock, you need to call me and ask me if I'm in trial, or if I fell down outside and broke my collarbone or what. Because that only gives us a day to flesh it out.
Exactly. And in my personal opinion, the, the more time we have to actually prepare and do it correctly, the better. Not the day before. The packets are completely, to be ready.
I'm sorry.
Shipped out to everybody.
Is, is the council getting a copy of the draft the same time you sent it to me?
We weren't.
Okay, but you're on it.
It was not requested.
We did request.
So everybody, everybody gets that, okay? So if you, if there's something on there that you think is not worried, or you need fleshed out, you can either talk to her, or you can just say, hey, here, you got your copy of the agenda. Is this word, is this language going to get us to what we need to do? And if there's something missing off of it, if you've got an email that verifies you asked for it, it'll be added on there before we come to this meeting on Monday night.
Then we could actually leave it at four o'clock. And then if anybody had any, and then you send it out at four.
I actually usually try to get it to y'all by Wednesday noon.
Then Thursday AM.
And we'll send it to him, again, so he has plenty of time to look at it.
By Thursday AM, you can have an email, if any of us, and then email you, and it would be done. That's our date.
Okay, so are we just, are, I guess I'm, that form is to be used to place something on the agenda. Are we talking about being able to place something on the agenda at three forty-five on a Thursday? Are we talking about, hey, this verbiage is a little off, or? Or are we talking about, "Hey, this verbiage is a little off, or I'm, I really need more in-depth detail?" What are we, what are we exactly, thank you. Cause to me, what it sounds like to me, what the issue is, is, okay, we've sent this over to, to Mr. Hamilton and everyone else, and Russell, you sent me the form and I'm just gonna say, it's about closing down Main Street. We're gonna close down Main Street. But that's not how it's working. So now you've seen that, oh, this isn't correct, but I've already sent you the request, just change these couple of words here. Is that what we're talking about, or are we talking about at 3:45 on Thursday, "Hey, I'm gonna call you up and tell you I need," or "I'm gonna send you an email saying I need this added to the agenda"? Something completely new, that was not on the original draft.
But it is, it is the same thing. I mean, i- if you, if you change the wording on something, it changes the thing anyway. So I mean, I don't, I don't understand.
Not, no.
Why wouldn't it?
Somebody wanna make a motion on what that changes that we're talking about, so we can focus on that.
Yeah, let's get done with it.
I'm making a motion that we table it and that we bring some suggestions, um, as to how we want it done, so that way we can pick, and make that flow a lot easier, hit some timeframes. That's-
Thank you.
I want a third?
May I ask a question? Okay, who's gonna, who's bringing these forms?
Alright, okay.
They're gonna, y'all are each gonna make your own form, y'all are gonna go on.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, set dates for a Pen Z meeting. So I would like for you to be here.
Okay, then I'll-
Well, it only does make an hour to this. Thirty minutes.
Thirty, thirty minutes.
And it would prefer to have, um, we've been having, uh, like a little bit of an ordinance meeting and so we'll kinda kill two birds with one's You don't have to stay for the ordinance, you can, you got, but we'll get them later.
What date's your proposal?
The date to you, babe.
I'm telling you, every evening seems like something's going on. I don't, I do not have a Monday for the rest of my life. Really, if I'm not here, I'll send others.
Okay.
The first the second Tuesday, and the Sa- and the third Tuesday, I'm, I'm taking, and then the, the third Thursday.
I want you to send the next meeting seventeen, six o'clock.
Seventeen at six o'clock?
Of course. At six PM.
We're talking about April now?
And we will not, we will not put a ordinance meeting, let's set that one, no.
Okay.
So who's making that motion?
Yes. Russell's made a motion to set the Pen Z meeting for April seventeenth at six PM.
It's a work session, right?
Workshop. And Debbie has seconded that motion, all in favor? Okay, background check, please.
Uh, we are, we discussed briefly about needing to do background checks and drug tests on all employees. And, uh, we have a background check that's needed ASAP. And we need to see if we can't come to an agreement on what, uh, on paying for it.
How much?
Don't look at me, I don't know. I was not very good in this information. Yeah, this is a more budgeted item.
What do we, what do we budget for the police department? No?
Five thousand dollars?
Okay.
Background. Just the background check for the, for a police chief, okay.
I provided you with some information about the show, go to that background check and drug testing and all, I guess that, but I don't have the details for it. So, does anybody, do you have any other?
I do not, because this was, it, background check fees is all it was.
We have a drug test.
There was nothing.
We have a drug testing company that comes to the school, and they do, normally do two to three, and they charge two hundred dollars.
Flat rate?
That's, that's urine and Brazil laceration.
Is that per person or?
No, total, okay.
Does that include the background thing?
No, just drug testing.
So I don't think you're gonna get a background check on, for law enforcement for that. I have contacted one, one person, and, uh, he is in law enforcement and he does background checks and he's forty dollars an hour. And he figures anywhere from ten to fifteen hours to do it. It's, it's a, it's a whole lot different background check than you're gonna do just normal.
There, there is a, a very specific law that deals with law enforcement officers. And generally, the hiring agency, we usually just achieve, is Monday to look at. If that person has a history in law enforcement, they get to go look at it. If Bonham's gonna hire somebody from Paris, they can go there and look at that person's employment file. And that, for those of us in the privacy, that's like, "You do what?" Go, "No, that's the law."
Yeah.
And so you, but now, there's, there's not one of those here, so I don't know, I don't know how you would get that, that data, since there's not already a law enforcement officer here to make that investigation. Certainly, it's gonna be something that would be required.
Is that not what the mayor, fall, falls under the mayor's?
It might be that, it might be that the mayor could, the mayor could do it and say, "We're starting a, a police department here and we need to look at that stuff."
Go ahead.
I believe checking city, city administrator is the, uh, they can be the head of the law enforcement agency and they can do a background check.
But the only head is city administrator.
Well, you don't have a city administrator, then it'd be the mayor.
The mayor, he's appointed as the police department administrator, but the volunteer department, yes.
And she would be the one that'd have to make the requests and do the better.
Her, and her, that's the mayor pro temp, yeah.
And that's, and, and that's, there's, cause I understand it's not a fee for that, that you just do it. Now, if you wanna do a formal background check on somebody and run it through a system someplace, then there are, there are private entities that do that for a fee, but how much it is, I don't-
And they just go for their employment down.
Yeah, they call and set up an appointment and say, "I need, this guy's blocked for a job here," says police, whatever it is. His or her employment file.
Go ahead.
That's, that's, that changed about either two years or four years ago that any law enforcement officer in the state of Texas, if they change from one agency to another, an investigator has to go to their previous agency
That's what I was-
and look at their files.
Yes, I think that's what we just said, you know? And, but that's, that's where it gets into, you know, the hourly rate and how many hours it takes to do the background checks.
The mayor don't get paid. If you had, if you had, if you had a police officer here that was doing it, that would be his or her job. That would be their salaried thing right there, they'd go over there and do it. So, the fee would be their, the salary they get paid. I don't think that, that former agency could charge you to look in their employment file.
There, there is no charge. No, there's no charge for that, it's for somebody to go and, and do that. There's a, there's a page in the TCO application that they can sign and allow somebody to do a background check. So, if there's a fee, how are we gonna pay for it?
It's the mayor pro temp's discretionary, or?
Okay, so, uh, how do you, wanna make that motion?
Are you gonna leave it open-ended, just whatever we have to pay for, it's what we're gonna do for it? Gonna put a cap on it?
I mean, how you gonna do? Has a discretionary.
Five hundred dollars.
So we can approve, two hundred dollars for the drug test and approve at your discretion of five hundred? As, just to start.
No, I don't actually. So this would just be background? This would just be background? Cause, um,
I would drive. My motion.
I don't know if it's under an optative, but if it's not.
I would, I would just ask if there, if there was a policy that says if an employee is driving a city vehicle and they have an accident, they have to immediately go get alcohol tested and drug tested. And to them, they just get to stop and get their driver's license, or some other cop to see where they go.
They have to go with testing, yes.
Okay. That's good, that's good to know.
Okay, so, uh, what is your motion for a background?
What's the estimate?
Change of fees.
Forty dollars an hour, or?
For ten to fifteen hours.
Ten to fifteen hours, he's estimating.
So five hundred dollars is in there, but, I mean, it's in that package.
But, um, the mayor can only approve without council approval of five hundred, y'all can approve more than that.
So do we need to just approve seven fifty or five hundred? Kind of like a motion to approve seven hundred and fifty dollars as the maximum expenditure for the background check? For this specific instance?
Right.
So Russell's made a motion to, um, approve up to seven hundred and fifty dollars for a background check fee. Greg can say it in the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will convene into closed session at eight fifty-seven.
I don't know, I don't think so.
Well, I don't use it.
Well, I can, I mean, get the ones that do.
Oh, well, yeah, get back Saturday morning after.
Well, now call, um, we can convene in doted session at nine thirty-eight. Okay, do we have any motions?
I'll make the request that we do a background check and a drug test on Andrew Lowen. What, what's the name?
Okay, Debbie, here's my motion to, um, have a background checked on and have him do a drug test, on Andrew Lowen. Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Ready to second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody wanna make questions for John?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.